Very much. Do I have a motion for an adoption of the agenda, please?
Madam Vice President, I move that we approve the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Second. Is the motion a second? Thank you very much, and Dr. Anderson is here to help us with school highlights.
We are so this is our favorite time of the board meeting when we get a chance to highlight our students and our staff. With that, we're going to start off first with the Living the Dream Pauline Barker Award. When we are highlighting our young people and our staff and our educators, we want to make sure everybody hears it.
Alright, so I'm going to go back to the issue. Living the Dream Pauline Barker Award. We are so excited. McClure Elementary that has won multiple awards thus far for a School of Character, National School of Character, Kansas School of Character. This evening, we are celebrating McClure. Well, our wonderful, brilliant principal, Dr. Gordon, please come up. And she was awarded the other evening at the Living the Dream Night with the Pauline Barker Award. Anyone from McClure Elementary, please come up as well. Let's give McClure Elementary an applause.
Just want to say our staff really appreciates the opportunity to be recognized by the Living the Dream Incorporated. Anytime that we our efforts to bring good character to our school and to our community and it's recognized, we deeply appreciate that. So, thank you so much. Yes, I have my instructional coach, Mrs. Padolia is here with us, and I also have my administrative intern with us. Can't talk this evening, and so we're very happy to have her with us today. Oh, now, I'm so nervous my name is going to be. Mrs. Sanders is here. My name just went, my, her name went right out the window. We're tired, we've had a long day.
Again, congratulations. So, really, a School of Character that truly is living the dream. So, we thank you all for all that you do. And again, congratulations. Thank you.
We have to hang tight for about five minutes because at the end of the next award, we'll be taking photos. Alright, so this is our drum roll for our attendance award. We started having an attendance trophy for the school with the highest attendance for the month. And of the attendance for the month, I don't think what the attendance was, but I bet the principal will be able to say what that attendance was, but his attendance maintains at a high level. And so, at this time, we would like our wonderful, brilliant, also, principal, Mr., I almost called you Mr. McKeckren. But many people do call him that. So, Mr. Williams, will you please come forward, share a little bit about your attendance? And anyone, Tom Williams, come forward. We congratulate you for McKeckren Elementary in recognition of the top attendance award.
Well, I just wanted to say that we have really been focusing on attendance a lot since Dr. Anderson's been here, and I know that that is one of the first things that if you're not in a seat, you can't learn. So, we do focus on that. One of the things that we do at the end of the year is the students that have the perfect attendance for the year, I cook breakfast for them, and they get to have me be their waiter as they watch the talent show that we have the last, the last day of the, that half day that we have, and we've done that probably for about 10 years. So, it does help kids, I mean, they get really bummed when they have to, they being sick. I mean, some of them actually are sick and they're at school like, no, you gotta go home. So, I've got our student council reps here, and they know how important student, these are our, our officers of student council, but they know how important it is too, just like we have a board here tonight. These students here represent our school, and so I'm going to have them introduce themselves here tonight, too.
My name is Haven Swift, and I am student council president.
My name is Jonathan Perez, and I am student council vice president.
My name is Brooklyn Rhodes Wonder, and I am the secretary.
They were just elected. They were just elected for second semester. We do this every semester, and we, our vice president, we try to get a fourth grader so that next year, when we have our, our new officers come in, that they, he'll be president next year and can carry on this for second semester. But I want to give our student council some praise too about this because they do a lot of things. Our PTO and our student council has a lot of fun activities and different things at school. One of the things we got coming up, we got the 100th Day of School. We always try to do something fun then, and student council is going to be sponsoring every, all fifth, fourth and fifth graders are bringing a cake mix, and all second and third graders are bringing a can of frosting, and we're going to be making 100 cakes to, before the 100th Day of School there, and every class is going to get to make some of those cakes, and we'll stack them ten high, and then we're going to eat the cakes as we stack and eat it, right? So, they sponsor that event, and so that, again, it's, I think, there's, it feels like a family when we do lots of fun activities. We got a bingo night and coming up with a Title I Math Night, but I think that's a big importance, too, where kids want to come to school, and especially on Fridays when we have our, our spirit cookies and things for sale that gets them to get up and come to school. So, well, thank you guys again, appreciate it.
And with that, we have a traveling trophy. It's very, very heavy. And so, this month, the trophy goes to McKeckren Elementary. Our student body president, trophy is now yours. Congratulations. We will be taking a photo with our board members, and I believe, Mrs. Cooper, are there any other awards that I just catch them on? So, first, we ask our students and our McKeckren family to stay on top. Our board members will be coming on up. And you guys come home with a medal. All of you come up a little bit far. There we go. I tried my. You're just going to walk up this way.
There you go. Good job, Haven. Right down. There you go. Right center.
Uh-oh, wait a minute. Is that another McClure? Oh, somebody would love to take that picture for you. No.
There you go.
We're all family, that's great.
Okay, you ready?
Oh, and my Williams cans, I'm just joking.
Alright, we're going to stay for just a moment, and we'll, ah, McClure's family coming on up. Again, congratulations. He's called Mr. McKeckren.
Good job. Congratulations. Good job.
Alright, then actually, give him this. Yes, ma'am. Go right over in the middle.
I believe that does conclude the highlights, but I will say at the end of the Living the Dream note, I do see Williams folks that are here, and you all were singing the other evening at the Brownie Board exam. Also noted in the newspaper, so we have a laminated article we have to be sure to bring around to you maybe while you're still here. Thank you so much. You guys were amazing this past week at the Living the Dream events. I don't believe we have any public community occasions. I don't have anything here. So, we will move on to business by consent. We have a motion, please.
I move the board approve the items of business by consent as presented and authorize the board president or superintendent to sign the special project and purchasing contracts for and on behalf of the board.
Okay, we'll move on to the superintendent's report, and the first thing, I believe, is the strategic plan portion, that's truancy report. Under the truancy report, in our strategic plan, we have a plan involving attendance and addressing attendance overall. You will see the truancy report on the board agenda for two meetings, and here's why we're approaching truancy a little different this year. As you may recall, in past years, you get a lot of information about attendance, but not necessarily truancy. This year, Dr. Grimes is working hard to look at truancy this year and last year's data. Normally, you get the data a year from a year ago. So, she's still collecting some of this year's data, and so, that data piece, a lot of that, you'll be getting at the next meeting. The PowerPoint, however, that she does have with her this evening is to talk about the initiative. She's brought a community partner with her because she wants you to know some of the things that person is also doing with her. She also looked at gender breakdown, so when you do get that data for next week, you'll also see a racial breakdown, a year, several year trend, all of that's new data, but to compare it to this year right now takes a little bit more time, just because we're still into the mid-year component. So, with that in mind, the first portion of her slide she'll begin with, and your community partner who is in the audience, can you also introduce them? And they're available to answer questions as well at the end.
Good evening. First, wanted to start with just some definitions, just for everyone here. What is truancy? What does that mean? For the state of Kansas, the truancy is unexcused absence for a significant part of the day. So, for Topeka Public Schools, that's 50% or more of your school day. And there's a 3-5-7 rule that we follow. So, three consecutive unexcused absences, five unexcused absences for a semester, or seven unexcused absences for a year, that constitutes truancy in the state of Kansas. The other term up there is called chronic absenteeism. This actually comes from the National Assessment for Educational Progress. Says that 10% or more of absent from school, unexcused or excused, is a problem. That's chronic, 10%. That happens really quick, early on, and so, we try to focus on both of those things. Some of the resources that we use here in Topeka Public Schools, we have the In Touch Automatic Dialer. If your student is absent, you automatically get a call from the automatic dialer that night for one class. One class will get you a phone call. We have several different levels of letters that we send via the mail, pre-truancy letters. The DA has provided us a letter to send to families as well, saying, hey, your student is, needs to be in school. And then, truancy letters that say, if this continues, then we're going to take that next step. We've done things, home visits. On their second consecutive absence, we go out to the, to the home and visit to say, what's going on? Do you need transportation? What's the problem? Is, is there an illness? Do you need some services? Like, community and schools, we provide a lot of services, basic needs, trying to eliminate some of the barriers to not being in school. Metro passes, which the board voted on and allowed us to have, every secondary student has availability to have a metro bus pass to eliminate another barrier to get to school. That's been a tremendous benefit for us to have that this year. You also heard some incentives. Perfect attendance gets you a breakfast at the end of the school year for some schools. And so, across the district, we're doing some incentives to reward those people who are in, coming to school. Kansas Children's Service League, KCSL, is a great partner. I have, Gail Cozad is here. She is the program director at KCSL for the East Region, and she has helped us tremendously with truancy in the last several years. We have representatives at State Street and Chase, and making great progress. They're at 86% improvement at State Street and 67% at Chase with those students that they're working with. So, their attendance is improving because of the people in school, so we appreciate that. We started a new initiative with the juvenile intake for secondary school. So, trying to keep students and families out of the court system, we've added an intake, kind of a ticket, that if you are getting ready to get an affidavit to go to court, we send you down to the juvenile intake to talk to Amy Mullins, who was hired by KCSL, to, again, look at the barriers. What are the barriers and why you can't come to school, to try to keep them out of the court system. So far, she's worked with 55 referrals from first semester. Community and schools, I kind of talked about them already. They continue to provide basic needs and eliminating barriers for us. Truancy officer, Mr. Mike Dickey, was here last year, and then Ms. Ott and I go to truancy court as a liaison between the schools and the court system. And so, that, that's been good, just communication between the two. The next several slides are some graphs. The first one is just to look at gender. Is there a significant difference between our males and our female students who are truant? And, and really, there is not a significant difference there. 47 females and 52 males, so it's pretty, pretty even. The next one is by race, and again, it's very small percent of the population are truant. Our highest truancy is in Hispanic population, 174 students out of 4,214 students are, have been truant. This is some last year's data. Then we looked at truancy by grade level. Is there a difference in elementary, middle, and high? There is a little bit of a difference. Elementary, we had 2% truant level. Middle school is a 3%, and high school, we saw a 7% truancy level. Again, extremely low, and looking at the national trends, Topeka Public Schools is doing very well as far as that percentage goes. The last slide is the average daily attendance comparison for the last five years. I will highlight really the last couple of years and where we're headed. Our goal is 95% attendance in all schools. Research shows if you're in school 95% of the time, you are going to score proficient and advanced, and you're going to outscore on state tests as well as college entrance exams. So, that's our goal, 95%. So, the high school, they made some significant gains from 85 to 88% last year. Middle school, you hit 95% last year, also gaining, and elementary has stayed pretty steady the last two years, 95% both of the last two years, so they're doing very well as well. Again, hitting that goal of 95%, that's our goal. Before I open up to questions, just kind of a quick update on Avondale, some other resources that are not up there. We opened the Avondale School this year. We have the day school, and we had 86 students first semester assigned to the day school for multiple days. So, those students that would normally have been home or out on the street, they were in school. So, maintaining their, their education and being in a school that's supervised, so that, that's been a benefit. Virtual school, we have 85 students enrolled there. We got our first graduate this fall, so that was pretty exciting as well. So, things are, are moving along in the right direction, I think, helping those, those truancy numbers. So, I will now, any questions you have for myself or Gail Cozad, who is here?
Any questions? Dr. Grimes?
Could you tell me a little bit about what you learned from the home visits? What are the reasons that kids were having unexcused absences multiple days? And that is a much quicker response than we have done in the past, if I remember correctly. So, what kind of changes are you seeing with that new practice?
I will tell you, the secondary level, the ones that I have done personally, it's a matter of somebody cared about me to come to my home, and that was probably the most significant thing. I even heard students tell me, don't miss because, you know, you've got to get a visit in your home, because we believe it's important. Going to the home showed it's important. So, that's one of the things that I saw. Since Dr. Anderson has been here, we have in, up the number of home visits, and her standard is two consecutive, and you get out the door, you go visit those, those families. Officer Dickey does a lot with the elementary, and, you know, maybe elementary people who are here can, can answer what, some of the things they see, but the barriers to getting students here, whether that be, I have to babysit until the, the parent gets home to, I can't get them to school to, no one's here to get them up in the mornings, things like that that we can assist with. But really, it's that care factor that I've seen at the secondary level, that we cared enough to go find them.
Do you find that it improves kind of the relationship of families and parents, that it's perceived less as punitive and as helpful?
Much more positive. And there's some negative too, but the majority have been positive. Again, we're meeting parents and students kind of on their turf. We're going to them instead of you come to us all the time. There's a, sometimes parents are a little apprehensive even of buildings, they had a bad experience when they came to school, so we go to them, and, and that's been very positive.
Dr. Grimes, do you see any trends month to month to month on attendance? So, are there certain months that are higher or lower than other months?
Towards the spring, that's when the majority of our attendance issues get worse, especially at secondary level. The older students, yeah, I took five classes so I could participate, but now I don't really need those five to graduate. Those were extras, so we see some of that happening as a trend. We really try to focus early on this year to tackle that 10% chronic absenteeism. Again, research says if you get it right away, you're less likely to become truant or continue chronic absenteeism if you can catch it in the first two, three months. So, that was kind of our focus this year. So, we'll see if that pays off this spring.
It's interesting, the headline, and I can't remember if it was the Topeka paper or the Kansas City paper this morning, talked about Missouri with the upset over the flu epidemic. Based on some data, they linked some thermometer to some app or something, 5% of Missourians were absent, I think. Do you want us to read it? Was it the Kansas City paper?
You know, it's the Kansas City paper.
But Kansas wasn't far behind. My own son's homesick today, flu, and yesterday too, so the doctor's not coming. So, we're struggling with that, I think, right now, but nice job on the attendance.
Other questions?
One of the things, I have a, certainly, I have a question, and you talked about the 10%. When we talk about the truants, were those are the young people for whom we've actually filed a truancy report on to the court when we say truant?
Yes, ma'am.
So, any, so the kids that we are seeing who are in that 10%, who are absent, who have excessive absences, and lots of those are excused, but you can have as many as, you know, 20, 30 in that first semester, if you're not careful of quote "excused." What are we finding with those people, with those kids as opposed to those who we are concerned about being truant?
So, a lot of that is education, educating the parents of not to excuse past that 10%. Again, showing them the data that your, your students will do better in school and achievement if they're in school, if they're, if they're in the building, we can educate, and that opens up possibilities for them. So, I really think some of that is just parents not realizing how important it is to be in school. They're looking at a grade card, you know, my student is, you know, they're, they're getting Bs, they're okay, so I'm going to excuse them again, but really, they, they will be an A student, which will then open more doors for scholarships and that sort of thing if they're in school. They will raise their achievement if they're there. So, that's kind of our focus on some of those students who get excused a lot, is just educating.
And so, what is happening with, with that group? What do you know? I mean, I, I don't know how many of those children years we've seen, because you said you were going to try to focus on that 10% group at the beginning of the year. So, are we, have we seen any, any changes in that?
I will tell you that that truant level, the ones that we have filed affidavits on, is lower at semester this year than it was last year. So, we are seeing maybe some improvement?
In the truant part, but I'm talking about the 10% or with the excessive absences. These are not, these are probably, we're not going to be filing right away. You know, we could file some truancy on these, some of these kids who have so many excessive absences because it becomes, it begs the imagination what's going on. No doctor's excuses, just a parental, or somebody signing as parent to excuse or, oh, Cory.
So, I don't, I don't have data on the, the number of excused absence in comparison to last year, that we can certainly look at that.
See where we are with, I, I'm just trying to get a handle on what we're doing for, for, for those, because I see those are dropping out kids.
Sure.
Those are kids are not going to be there. They're not probably causing any problems, they just don't show up, it's an empty chair.
Yes.
So, the truants are often kids that we have other issues with, not just the fact they're not in school. They, they present with a number of, of issues. So, I guess I'm concerned about what, what we are finding. Are these kids, are these, as a group, are they significantly behind in their educational pursuits? You know, who are these kids besides the 10%? And I just don't, I didn't hear from you what, what you were finding about who these people, who these kids are.
There's a, the 10% chronic absenteeism is, it's a pretty broad spectrum of students. We have students who are doing fairly well in school, but they're excused a lot, and maybe that's medical, maybe that's because they are doing well, they don't see the need to be in school. So, I think there's a broad spectrum, but again, that's a, I don't have good data specifics to tell you at this time.
And if I, if I could interject, part of coming back two times is to have this dialogue, you know, rather than having a five-minute presentation on truancy, to really hear some background and partnerships and other kinds of things, because this is far more detailed, at least than I'm used to having heard in the past. And then to get your question, so when she comes back the second time, she can also have that level of input, such as looking at the demographic makeup and/or discipline makeup of the truant students. So, we certainly can bring that information back, along with any other information you'd like to see.
I guess there isn't, I like asking like that 10% who are, so it rips for all sorts. I'm guessing that they are kids who are, school's not a great place for them to be necessarily because they, they're not doing very well, they've lost interest somehow. So, that becomes part of our responsibility and to try to figure out, how do we make this experience that they're having better? Or do we have them not, do we not have them in the right classes? Do they need to be in different kinds of classes? Have we, as this is, are these some people that just, you know, that empty chair's been empty so often, people kind of forget who they are. So, I, I guess that's, that was in my mind, is that we get to know who these young people are, and then it becomes our responsibility to try to make this a better experience for them, so. And they're harder, they're, they're, you know, truant, when somebody's truant, you've got your file an affidavit, prove they're, that is a truant, but we know that others are, are, there's that risk too. Okay, and, and any other questions? I have one more. I've been thinking about this a lot, so I knew this was coming, but one of the things I, I heard from someone the other day, and I can't even tell you who it was anymore because we were talking about a host of things, about the absen, the tardiness, have we been, kids who have so many tardies in a week or in a month, then you begin to wonder how many days were they actually in school, I mean, were, how many times were they facing a teacher? And I, and I don't know how, how we're keeping track of that sort of thing, but that, to me, is, is another issue that probably needs to be looked at. How many kids have 50 tardies in a, in a, in a, in a month? I mean, that's, when you start, that tardy can be almost half a day. I mean, that's, when you start, that tardy can be almost half a day. I don't know, I don't know.
Well, with the access of Tyler, we certainly have the ability to pull tardies and attendance overall. And our consultations, every thirty days, we talk with principals about who are those students. Sometimes the tardies are, just for a variety of reasons. And so we certainly can pull that data and just kind of add that to our slide the next time in terms of just in general, and if not to the slide, give you that direct information as well, because we have that at our fingertips from Tyler. And we look at that every month as well.
Yeah, and that, you know, kids are late, they're, you know, forever. But I think there are some issues where there are some places where I think that may be, that's another way of being truant, whatever, really ever being truant. You're still here someplace, so again, not in the seat. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Grimes. And I just want to add, as she's given that detailed report and guided Avondale West Alternative School off to a start, she is doing an exceptional job. And we so appreciate you, Dr. Grimes, and your team for the first great half of the year with the new vendor.[723.23][723.23][applause]
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. The computer went. There it is. Okay, we have action items, the approval of the recommended transportation company. And I believe that is, we have a discussion regarding the transportation company. First, Mr. Robbins.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, and rest of the board. The operations team is prepared this evening to offer a recommendation to the board concerning the vendor of our choice. And hopefully, you approve of the vendor to provide student bus transportation services beginning the next academic year for Topeka Public Schools. If we go back just several weeks, the request for proposals was originally released October the 11th. The bids closed November 20th. And ever since then, there has been a committee that is composed of different members of the operations team that will be highlighted once you see the recommendation that has been working tirelessly to try to identify the vendor that we think is best suited to provide reliable and safe transportation for our students beginning next year. The person that took the lead in this request for proposal and who will have presented to the board this evening is our Director of Purchasing, Ms. Deanna Merriman.
Good evening. Madam Vice President, members of the board, I'd just like to share a short overview of the RFP, or Request for Proposal and Negotiation Process that led up to our recommendation for award. As Mr. Robbins mentioned, we've been working on this for a while. We did initially send out bids in October for Request for Proposals. That closed on November 20th. We received four proposals in response to that request. And initially, we met with all four, invited them in to provide some clarifications, present to us why they thought they would be a good choice to provide our transportation services.
Excuse me, can we put, get the PowerPoint, is it out there? Thank you.
And so after those initial meetings, the committee met and reviewed all of the proposals and determined that we were ready to move forward with one key vendor for further negotiations. That was Kansas Central School Bus. We had several more meetings with them and worked very hard to come to a mutual agreement. Some of the key proposal strengths that the company has that are also some of our key focus issues are a commitment to safety, a strong organizational structure, including two driver supervisors on the road every day. That was a very important point that the committee took into consideration. They have GPS, geo-fence tracking, so that they can track when a school bus arrives on time or late, as the case may be. They have some good driver retention and recruiting practices. They are going to offer us a parent app that will allow parents to track the arrival time for their students' pickup and drop off. They have similar experience in St. Louis, Chicago, and those districts also have similar demographics to Topeka. And last but not least, they did submit the second lowest cost proposal. And that is based on a fleet of all-new buses for the 2018-19 school year. So it is the belief of the committee that Kansas Central School Bus is best positioned to meet the needs of the district at this time, based on both service and cost. If the board agrees this contract tonight, the initial contract would be a five-year contract with the option to renew for an additional five years if both parties agree.
I'm intrigued by, I'm intrigued by the opportunity for parents to track their child's school bus. And was this unique to this vendor, or did other companies offer the same service?
Other companies offer that as well. In fact, all four were able to offer that option.
Is it available now by Durham?
I don't believe they have it available at this time. They did say that they could have it available going forward.
I would just say thank you for your scrutinizing these so closely and for placing student safety as a priority. We appreciate that.
Very welcome. Any other comments or concerns? Okay, well, thank you very much. Mr. Robbins, do you need anything to add?
Just if there's any additional questions, we do have in the audience representing the new vendor, their contract manager, whose name is Jim Coons. If you would, please stand, Jim.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. What we're going to have to do, since we, I believe we have to suspend the rules and make, move this up to an action item. So we have a motion to change this from a discussion to an action item, so that we can go down tonight. Well, we have to approve to move it there, do not? Okay, we'll just go ahead and do it. All right, I thought we should need to move.
Can we just get some clarification on that? Because it seems like we need to have.
We do this every time.
Point of, an action item needs two weeks, right? Is that, somebody clarify that for me, please. I mean, those are rules.
So, Mr. Co, or either the, is it Co?
My understanding that as long as the board and the administration agree to have a discussion and action item at the same time, at the same meeting, that they are able to do that and both have the discussion and then go ahead and take the action, as long as they move to take action.
So we have to move to take action, and then we take the action? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
That's what I thought I was trying to do. Okay, we have a motion and a second to move the discussion item on the recommendation for the transportation, the new transportation company, to an action item. All those in favor? Moving to, to act, to act on it, I'm sorry, to act on it? All right, now we have to act and approve it. Yes, Jess, you're opposed to this?
I just think when we do this, unless there's a compelling reason to do it, we negate the opportunity for comments from community members, patrons, parents, students. And so in principle, I'm opposed to having an action item and a discussion item on the same night. I'm ready to vote for, in two weeks, I don't anticipate I will change my mind, but I just think that as a general rule, that there ought to be opportunity for.
For broader discussion.
To be able to voice their concerns.
Okay. I'm thinking that there is a compelling reason to do this, okay, tonight. So, Mr. Robbins, can you help us with this, please?
Yes, I can understand your concern, Dr. Bickelson. Under normal circumstances, I can tell you anything that was presented by the operations team. We would allow the discussion, one meeting, and then action the next. We are up against the wall as far as timing is concerned. We would have preferred to present this proposal to the board at our last board meeting, but we were not completed with doing our due diligence. As soon as the board approves it, there's things that we need to do very quickly so that we can start putting plans in place for the transition. There's a number of logistics that have to occur in order to prepare the current vendor to vacate the site where all the buses are housed. You know, we're looking at close to a hundred buses that have to be moved and also that many new buses brought to Topeka and somewhere staged prior to them moving into the current bus bar on 21st Street. The current provider really will have to provide transportation clear up until July 1st, so that not only do they cover the rest of this academic year, but also summer school. So there's a number of things that we have to put in place so that we can have a smooth transition and be ready to transport students with a new provider the very first day of school and all this.
Does that help?
It does help. I still, I mean, I was not voting, so I'm okay.
Yeah, I think, no, but I understand your, I think we all don't like the fact that we have to discuss something and then vote on it, particularly something of the magnitude of the school bus company that we will be using for this coming year. And just a piece to you, I mean, we, the finance committee met on this past Tuesday, and we talked at great length, at great length, about all of the intricacies, about what their hiring practices were, what they were going to be doing, a whole host of things that we didn't discuss this evening. So it wasn't that we, that some of us knew more than we were mentioning that we knew this evening, but it was a very thorough discussion. So we all believed that we were making the right decision here. And just to let you know that we had that discussion, anyway. So I, so we, I believe we're calling for a vote, a final vote on this. So did you get it? Are we going to have this, or we have to raise our hands? Okay.
The final vote, I'm recommending approval of the recommendation to accept Kansas Central School Bus as our vendor going forward. My opposition was to having the discussion and the.
Okay, so we have our final. So now we're waiting for the approval? Okay, so wait, you have a motion to approve the recommendation? Okay. All right. We're going to have an opportunity for a board member comments, and then we'll have a motion. John, Mr. Williams, yes?
Just briefly, appreciative of the district's efforts to commemorate Martin Luther King Day and my invitation I had to participate in some of those activities. It was nice to see the poetry, the art stuff, the essays, the numbers of our students who participated in awards and scholarship dollars as well. So just thankful for the opportunity.
I had meant to point out when we were doing disposition, business by consent, that we had approved this MOU between Scott Dual Language School and the Ministry of Education and Culture for the country of Spain. And just so our audience knows, this is yet another kind of accolade for our innovative dual-language program. This is an official agreement with actually Spain to acknowledge that the program would be established as an international Spanish academy. And I would encourage you to read on the agenda the terms of that so that you can have a better understanding of how revolutionary this program is.
Okay, that will be it. I need a motion for another executive session, please.
Madam Vice President, I move the board recess to executive session to discuss individual employee contracts and performance pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under coma and to discuss potential litigation with our legal counsel pursuant to the attorney-client privilege exception under coma, with no action taken other than adjournment.
Eight o'clock, that's safe.
So by eight o'clock PM.
And I would recommend that we take a ten-minute, I mean, a five-minute break before we go down to the meeting.